Good evening. We are going to come back into a regular session. Welcome everyone here this evening, joining us. Thank you very much for being with us. And also again, I'd like to thank our good friends Kirk Rocker and everyone at Texas GMC for not just live streaming the four B's but so many things throughout the district events that Bart does stream for us and make them available to friends and family across the nation. That's just an awesome thing. We just thank you so much for doing that and making that available. And now we can move our colors to be presented tonight by the Summer Creek High School Army Junior ROTC.
Color guard, pull. Left, face. Present, arms. Sir, the color guard from Summer Creek High School requests permission to post the colors.
Permission granted.
Thank you, sir. Order, colors. Right, face. Forward, march. Color guard, pull. Right, face. Post. Colors.
Mr. Sponzo, please lead us and pledge allegiance.
Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to our republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the great Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Order, arms. Left, face. Forward, march. Forward, march.
Would you please remain standing and join us in a moment of silence? Thank you. Dr. Sponzo, do we have any commendations and recognitions this evening?
Would you, Mr. President and trustees, would like to start our commendations as we have been doing with our inspiring moment for this month. And this past weekend, really kind of exciting, we all got to enjoy the 63rd Annual UML ISD Rodeo and Livestock Auction. Really, really great family weekend events, but truly the highlight, from my view, is our FFA students in there showing their animals at our livestock auction. So tonight's inspiring moment is about that. And what if you would please run the video?
The history of the livestock show, you know, I can only go back so many years. My first year was back in 78 when we started. And actually, the livestock show rodeo was actually located on Wilson Road. And we probably had around 15, maybe over 75 kids. So it was just kind of back then, it was probably the only thing in town. This was kind of like the center of attention. So it was kind of, it was the event.
UML is, even though it's referred to as a local ISD combination 4H and FFA livestock show, it actually is bigger than many of the state's county shows, which encompasses what they're doing now, every high school and elementary school district and every 4H staff. So we've been very blessed here with the continued or building of a tradition.
Every year around January, end of January, beginning of February, you see people just coming out from all over, all over the community. And it's a really cool experience to see that many people get excited and interested in the rodeo and the cook-off, and then come out and support our kids.
So we'll get there in October, you know, since day one, I'm out there walking my land, you know, making sure it's a proper exercise, feeding them twice a day, making sure they're all nutritious, so you use to make a great part of the environment.
And the process of raising an animal and showing it is actually a lot of work. I got my steer last year in June, and I had it all the way up to February to show. So it was nine months of getting up at six o'clock in the morning, feeding, missing activities every school, like going with friends, whatever, because you have to be there twice a day.
Yeah, it takes at least four months to raise an animal. You wake up every morning, you go with their feed, and then after school you have to go and feed, and then you have to work with your animal, exercise them, bathe them, cook them, and it's a lot more work than just taking care of a pet.
Students also get the opportunity to learn leadership skills that won't only help them here at the high school level, but can help them later in life.
So the other thing is all about how to love themselves. One of our major focuses is leadership, and ever since I joined this organization, I've learned so much about leadership. I've become a better teacher, I've been able to be better, and it just teaches us career skills in life.
Personally, I've learned what it means to serve a lot of people, to be, you know, a role model, things like that, because that's a pay such a big organization, it's one of the biggest ones at the school, and it's the biggest in the nation.
There's always a chance for you to step up and prove who you are. You can run for offices and not only your chapter, but outside, like district, the area, the state, and even national, if you really wanted to go that far.
Everything teaches you to learn for yourself. You have to ask people, you have to experience. It really teaches you just passion and work ethic for something that you actually want.
It's about the time that people put in, put into the program. It's not about us, it's about the kids.
The history, and we move back to kids who've seen school and have led the last 35 years. Their opinion was very, very supporting kids, and come back and now supporting kids.
It looks great. I love having Dr. Sponzo, he is all like, all into this, and I love that. I'd like to see the audience when they're showing, like it's still nice to know that all of those people care about what you're doing.
And the option of all the people that are supporting you, the local community members, the school district officials, all my fellow members, it was just awesome.
Very awesome. And I'm really excited to report that a record was set this year at the livestock auction. So in total, over $300,000 was raised for our FFA student scholarships, and we're just really, really excited about that.
Now that's worth noting.
So, Mr. President, do allow me to make some introductions of stars who are here this evening. First and foremost, I want to introduce some of our student FFA officers. You saw him in the video, Ernest Brumfield, and Ernest is the UML High School and the area district FFA president. Ernest, would you please stand? Kingwood High School's FFA treasurer, Lauren Canales, Lauren. And UML High School's vice president, FFA vice president, Garrett Normal. They are very, very special young people, but, and they work very hard, but they don't get it done alone. So I want to recognize a couple of our FFA sponsors who are here this evening. Jessica, and you saw her in the video, Jessica Armentura, who is the Atascocina High School Soon to be our immediately asked teacher of the year, the UML High School FFA advisor, Charlie Duke. CTE director, who really oversees FFA and all of our career technical education programs, Dr. Marley Morris. Last but not least, every year, the UML Livestock Show is dedicated to an honoree or honorees, individuals who in many ways really dedicated the vast part of their life to supporting FFA programming and the livestock show in particular. So this year, there were two honorees, two now retired family members from UML ISD that we miss greatly. Bodie Wagner was one, Bodie could not be with us this evening, but the other honoree this year is here and has his better half with him, Mr. J.C. Evans. J.C., thank you. As you see, you are very welcome. The lives you touched in our school district are in the thousands, and they're all better off for having had the opportunity to work with and to know you. But I don't want to forget, for as great as you are, you are sitting next to one of the most outstanding English and reading teachers this school district has ever seen, and that's Mary Ann Edwards. Mary Ann, it's good to see you. Thanks for being here. So, Mr. President, for a moment, I'm going to turn it back to you to introduce those standouts, and then we'll have some commendations.
As you know by now, once again, we are scrolling through all of our stellar standouts from this past year, sent in by all our campus principals and all our students. And I just want to, you know, point out that in this class, 11 of the students that we see, their names being shown here, will have their artwork displayed at the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo. That's... Do you want it? Or it's just out there?
Yes, it's good work.
And 21 of our UML ISD students have been named winners in the 2015 Scholastic Art and Writing Contest. We're proud of all these kids, and they just do a great job, and it's just great to see them. And remember that they're all, all these names each month are archived on the district website. So thank you, Dr. Sponzo. Okay, now we're going to move to...
More commendations.
We have our commendations, and then we'll go to comments. Do we need to...
Yes, if you will join the antrend. Mr. President, we have two commendations to issue this evening, one for our superstaffers for the month of February, so I'm going to ask Jerry Mondaire to go to the podium to introduce them. And then when Jerry is finished, I'll ask Melissa Havers to head on up to the podium, and we have pretty extraordinary, and I think very special commendations to make to a couple more staff.
So, just as a reminder, each month campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work and advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at school committee tonight, including a $200 gift card to Pappas Restaurants, thanks to an award sponsor. And our sponsor for this month is Nightlight Pediatric Urgent Care. Amanda Ferrera from there, from Nightlight, is going to join me, if you come on up, Amanda. As you're coming up, let me just tell you a little bit about Nightlight. They are an after-hours pediatric clinic, and they're open when the primary physician's office is closed. They've been in business for seven years in three other locations, but they will be opening an UML location February 23rd in Dieric Marketplace, which will be next to Toys R Us and Babies R Us. So we want to be sure and go out there and mostly have a grand opening for February 23rd. So thank you, Amanda. I'm going to hand these to you. Let's find out who has them. Okay, so let's start off with our elementary superstaffer tonight, and that is Allison Wolf from Oak Forest Elementary. Allison, come on up and bring your principal, Sherry Watson-Liskey. So those who nominated, Allison said, she is a dedicated teacher and a caring person. This year, Allison partnered with a fifth grade class to complete service learning at Rosemont Assisted Living, a senior living facility within walking distance from our campus. Each month, both classes walk to Rosemont Assisted Living and read or completed activities with the residents. This brings so much joy to her students and to the residents. We are so lucky to have Allison at our campus. For our secondary superstaffer, Brittany Wheeler from Summer Creek High School. Brittany is a social studies academic lead teacher, and those who nominated are said, Mrs. Wheeler helped develop community by providing holiday gifts to 118 students, which encompass Summer Creek High School, two middle schools, and four elementary schools. The gift range from $20 to $50. And for our support staff superstaffer for this month is Don Gilbert. If Kenny Kinder will be calling Don. Don is the carpenter and crafts department lead. Those who nominated him said, Don responds to any after-hours emergency calls 24/7. He supervises the crafts department in the absence of the department supervisor. Don has been on call for the district in excess of 20 years. He never says no when asked to complete a task. He is a very responsible and he's dependable. Don closes the gap towards excellence every day with his service to UML ISD. I don't know where we're going. There's a lot of direction. Good evening, board, board trustees, Dr. Sponzo, and community members. I'd like to ask Donnie Vogren, the principal of Riverwood Middle School, to join me up front. He actually has the commendations to make, and what an incredible commendation he has.
Good evening. Tonight, I've got a story that fortunately, we don't have to tell very often, but tonight it's, I think it's really important that we share. Back in November of 2014, on the 18th, Riverwood Middle School had a tragedy nearly averted thanks to two very special staff members. And we're very fortunate tonight to have both of those staff members and our, I'm going to tell you the story of what happened that evening, but the staff member, all of them are involved. So I'd act like Karen and Greg, if you guys could come up with Mike and Roxanne. And as they come forward, I'll let me tell you what happened. On the 18th, Ms. Mata, she was coming to school, suffered a heart attack as she pulled into the parking lot of our school and crashed her vehicle into a pole. And as that, this happened at about 7:45 in the morning, as students were arriving, and you can imagine, at a middle school, when students are arriving, it's a lot of chaos. Students quickly came to Mike Blaney, who was in, out, on duty in the front of the school, and he rushed out to see what happened in the parking lot. And Mr. Blaney, along with another community member who just happened to be dropping off a student, went into action right away. Ms. Mata's car had, she was, it was running, it was impaled on a pole, and they broke out the glass on the vehicle to get her out of the car, to see what was going on. Mike quickly ran back into the building to get Roxanne, our school nurse. Roxanne Larson is, we are so very fortunate to have Ms. Larson, who is a previous trauma nurse, and she quickly went into action as we, as we and the rest of the school went into action. And that day, so many things just happened to come into play, but I can tell you, without these two individuals, it could have very certainly been a crisis that wasn't averted. So after performing CPR in the parking lot with Ms. Mata and reviving her, the emergency personnel arrived on the scene, and emergency room personnel, the firefighters on the scene, and the paramedics, all said that without these two people, Ms. Mata wouldn't be here. We are very, very thankful to have these two excellent personnel that epitomize what you want in a team. And thanks to their quick efforts and the rest of the efforts of the team at Riverwood Middle School that day, everyone jumped into action and everything worked out to play. So we would like to recognize Mike Blaney and Roxanne Larson for their heroic efforts on the day. Needing for my new Twitter page, @Riverwood.
Okay, we are going to now move on to questions and comments by pages or employees in the district regarding agenda items or other matters. And this show, this is the only one I have, Greg. From the South Lake, please take a cookie. See you, guys.
I'm so excited to share that AFT is taking UML ISD employees to lobby day this year. We're taking charter buses, and we're leaving at, we're leaving at 6:00 a.m., double flights forward to party at 6:30 a.m., and then we'll return around 5:30. We're providing breakfast and lunch, and we're there to talk to legislators, and apparently we have a lot to talk about after the legislative committee last week, so we have a lot to share. So the flyers, I have flyer pitches, and any employees can register in line to go, and there don't have to be a queue over to go as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, before we move into comments by ordinary, I just wanted to let you know, everybody is, there's two seats empty this evening. Mr. Rushing unfortunately had to attend a business meeting, so he sends his regret, sorry we cannot be here. And Mr. Arringwahde unfortunately came down with something. Earlier today, he called me, and I thought it was the best advice to tell him to stay home and not be coughing and steaming on us, but just so he feels better. So that's why they are not able to do this this evening, because we were just a little short in it. With that, I'm going to give my remarks to the last.
I hold my comments about the rodeo and the cook-off, gets to the foundation portion of meeting. I want to recognize Michael Blaney and Roxanne Larson again. It's just, it's a wonderful thing that we have people like that, they don't have the ability, but just to step in with that, to basically save someone's life, it's an amazing thing. What was the date of the lobby day for the...
March 9th, the first day of spring break.
March 9th, the first day of spring break. So that is lobby day, get on the bus with AFT to go to Austin for lobby.
Have extra flyers.
Crispin has, South Lake has flyers for you, so, March 9th. January is just, for school board members, really an awesome meeting, because you get so much stuff and thank yous and everything else, and we, you know, it keeps coming. And so I wanted to thank everybody who, again, gave me, gave us their thank yous. We really appreciate it. And again, we don't do this for the thank yous, we do this because we truly care about our...
Another big one tonight?
Yeah, another big one tonight. But again, thank you for everyone that is a member of the district of parents who do what they need to do, we're just a small part in making this district a... That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Sponzo?
Yes, I will be brief for the first time in a while, but, you know, I had lots today with Dr. Sponzo and Troy Kate and Mr. Kramer, and for the first time I can remember, I went to a meeting where I got to speak. went to a meeting where I got to speak, and I spoke the least amount of time out of anybody that got up and spoke, so I didn't think Mr. Kramer would ever shut up. So anyway, so enough said there. I know that J.C. Adams and Mary Ann left already, but man, what a tribute to them on Friday. And it was a family affair, and yes, J.C. was the one being honored, but I'm gonna echo some words from Dr. Sconzo about Mary Ann and her job in the classroom. She taught one of my kids, one of my older ones. For those of you who know, I had, I've had two graduate, one from Mubble, one from Tascasita. Had so much fun, I started over, so we have one in elementary and one in middle. But she was a fantastic teacher, fantastic mentor, and I was, I'm glad to see them here tonight. Also, we're getting down towards the end of basketball season, and I believe as it stands right now, eight of our ten, is that right? Eight of our ten basketball teams, boys and girls, are gonna be in the playoffs, so that's a tribute to our athletic department, so very proud of them. And let's see, I think, oh, and next Monday, they probably still have a few slots available for the UML ISD golf tournament. That's the big fundraiser that they promoted last month that benefits all of our golf teams. They raise a ton of money for our golf teams, and basically they self-fund that program through this one golf tournament. So it's a collaborative affair across the district, so if you're not busy next Monday, come out to Kingwood Country Club, we'd love to see you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sidney. Ms. Conrad?
I have no comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've done a couple of things I just want to share, you know, and as Mr. Lopez said, January was a very good month. I'm still trying to get return letters to all, I was just overwhelmed by how well you treat me in January. So I wanted to share with my board members, not the audience, I had a good time in January, and I wanted to just mention the banner banquet. This is the time that I really get to have a good time with future leaders, as I call them. And I want to call it a couple of schools that I went to in January, it was Timbersale, Tascasita Springs, Maple Brook. Now I'm gonna move forward a little bit here, I went to North Belt, this Friday Willow Creek, next Friday Fall Creek, and I'm kind of looking forward to it. So I tell you, and the lunches seem to get better and better, I really love them. Mr. Sidney has already mentioned the golf tournament, so this coming month, we'll just mention that again, and I'm looking forward to playing with my friend over there as we raise money for the golf teams. I also want to mention that on the seventeenth and eighteenth of February, next Tuesday and Wednesday, well, I think I'll let you go ahead and talk about that in our comments on boards, I'll leave that alone. But I will mention that on the eighteenth of February, Council of PTA is honored today. I'm looking forward to that, and I will be there for that also. Besides that, Mr. President, that's it. I have a busy January, less January, busy January, and February is moving in the same direction.
I appreciate that, Ms. Cunningham, I think you might want to roll that extra eat you've been doing.
Start some more.
Just quickly, I just want to mention, we had the, met with the judges from HEB, and as many of you may know, we were, had the honor of being selected as one of the six finalist districts in large school category for the state of Texas, the HEB Annual Award. We've already won a $5,000 payment, gift, and the winning district wins $100,000. So we met with them today, and I'll tell you, our students that were there representing us, I had the honor of representing my colleagues there in the board, but hearing our parents, community leaders, volunteers, students just tell our story, it was just great. And these people asked some very appropriate questions, and those guys were all through the challenge, and they told Dr. Sconzo later that we actually kept in overtime because they were supposed to be leaving at a quarter to two, they, it was after two before we finally got up to leave. So it was, it was a very good, very good experience, and the district was represented very, very well. And I just want to say also to the FFA kids, and I thanked them when I was talking to them back, but Special Kids Day that they put on, and with the, just gargantuan efforts by Carla and Glenn Redman and all the adults that they have held them to put that on for all our special needs kids throughout the district. I got to go this year with my grandson Jake, who's at Elm Grove, and his dad, and it was just something to see him get up the courage to go and pet a sheep that was three times his size, but it was great he did it. And it was just a great, great time, so that's just awesome, all those people who put those things on. So with that, Dr. Sconzo, I'm gonna turn it to you, and I did not forget, comments from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a comment. It really comes as no surprise to me that none of you referenced this in your comments tonight. Mr. Scoffler, you did speak about the district being a finalist for the HEB Annual Award of Excellence in the large school district category, and that in and of itself truly is a, is a very prestigious thing, and certainly a tribute to our entire UML ISD family and frankly to our community. It is very rare, though, very rare, that a district finds itself to be a finalist for two HEB Awards, that's its distinctions, and we enjoyed that this year. Not only is the district a finalist, but the school board is a finalist in the school board category for the HEB Award of Excellence. And I really want to emphasize that for everyone because it is a very, very distinguished kind of recognition, and from my vantage point, it is a clear recognition of the reality that to a person, we have an extraordinarily high-performing, only about children, school. So you may have rightfully earned all the accolades in January, but I'm thrilled that in February, you're getting recognized again for the incredible work and leadership that you provide to our entire district. So congratulations to each and every one of you for that truly prestigious decision.
Thank you, Dr. Sconzo. Okay, now I'm gonna turn to our parliamentarian, Ms. Conrad, if you would bring any motions we have on a closed session?
Yes, Mr. President, as to the personnel, I'm going to that board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as of this minute.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And as to the minutes, I move that the board approve the minutes for the regular board meeting on January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Any discussion on the minutes?
I second it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Five zero.
And as to the minutes, I move the board approve minutes for the special board meeting held on January twenty eighth, twenty sixteen.
Second. Okay, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Conrad. And now we will move to updates of board associations and committees. First one, first one is advertising, I don't believe, Mr. Rushing told me we do not have a report for this evening. Next is audit committee, Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, Mr. President, the audit committee is continuing to do their work with programs, departmental audits, they're also assisting our safety and secure schools with the safety, safety audits, and so everything is looking rather good. We do have a committee meeting coming up here the next, I believe it will be April, if not sooner, but that's all I have to report on, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Lopez, Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
We've scheduled the, I haven't scheduled, the meeting for the board evaluation, but that's all we have, ten minutes.
Thank you. And Mr. Aronwati told me that he had asked Mr. Sidney to provide the update on building and planning.
Yeah, we met last week with another group, not, not like what we've done in the past, looking at energy consultants. This was more of a group looking at how to, how to fix some and streamline some of our equipment. And so what we've asked them to do, I mean, on the surface it sounds good, but we don't know what the price tag will look like. But taking some of our campuses that are using multiple types of devices, streamline those into the same type of device, monitoring, more efficiency, as they would say, pay for itself, but again, we haven't seen the numbers yet. So that's, that's pretty much what we talked about at this meeting, and then of course our normal projects that are ongoing and so forth. So once we have a little more information, we'll bring that to the rest of the board and let you see and make your own judgment on what we talked about, as far as that.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Will that include bring to the board, is that a workshop, or is that just to a report?
It would probably be, I would guess, I don't know, Dr. Brown, I mean, I think we're too early to say if it would go to a workshop or award meeting. It was really, we kind of, the consensus was, we didn't really like the, just the consultant and savings type of program.
Right.
What I liked about this with the, the building program we're about to embark on, they could be a big player in that and making sure we're getting the right devices and the right mechanics and machinery going forward, but then also giving us some type of proposal on how to retrofit some of our older campuses to bring them up to speed from an efficiency standpoint. So again, don't, just preliminary, just giving us the broad strokes, have not seen a price tag to bring to y'all, so that's kind of what we're having.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sidney, I was just curious, because I know we've got some facilities that have cool storage systems and things of this nature, so just wondering.
Well, and then one of the keys, one of the keys as we looked at it was the chiller replacements.
Right.
You know, and we do, we've got one now.
Very good.
That we're having to do. So this is looking at inventories, looking at replacement cycles, and how that fits into the grand scheme of things going forward.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Brown, anything else to add to that?
Thank you, Greg. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sidney. And next, Mr. Lopez, back to you, Education Foundation.
I think as most everyone knows, this last weekend was the UML ISD Education Foundation, where the other, the weekend before last was the cook-off, this last week was the rodeo. We had no official update yet on the results. We do know that Friday, we sold the most tickets in the history of the rodeo, so that was a record-setting performance, we're really excited about that. We don't have a final count though of how much was raised, but it was really a big success. We want to thank everybody who went out and supported the foundation and supported the school district by attending the rodeo and donating and volunteering and doing everything to make it the success that it was. And it's, it's just really exciting, we've raised this number, all proceeds are going to go to the Education Foundation, which directly fund our kids. So again, I just want to thank everybody for all the work and support and effort that we need to make the rodeo this year a success.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Next is Finance Committee. We met today, and we were planning our bond sale and bond refinance coming up in the April-May timeframe, so that's, it's all in place, we're moving forward on that to kind of dovetail what's happening on the Building Planning Committee as we get ready to, to start construction, start the planning, as those things come down. And we actually, on the twenty-fourth of this month, we will have our, this is really our first official budget workshop, we're already there, so we're kicking that process off, so a lot, lot going on, in place to, in place to look. And next, we have Legislative Committee, so Mr. Rushing couldn't be with us this evening, I'll turn it to Mr. Cunningham and Ms. Conrad, we, a lot of people were here the other night for the, for the meeting, I was, it was great. Ms. Conrad?
We did, we had our update the other evening, Dr. Sconzo had a presentation to fill us in on a few updates with our client's trial, as well as some interesting deals that have been put forward. So that update is available on our website, our public information podcast provided a website for us, for the eighty-fourth legislative session, that's under the Information tab, and the presentation that Dr. Sconzo shared with the committee last Thursday is posted there, if you're interested in reviewing that. Additionally, we'll be in Austin joining the Chamber of Commerce on their trip, on their legislative trip on the seventeenth and eighteenth, so that's next Tuesday, we'll be jumping down there to the, to the state.
Thank you. Mr. Sidney? Program Evaluation?
Nothing to report, we didn't meet, we're not meeting in February, scheduling complex, we are gonna meet twice in March and once in April, so I should have more information for you next month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Technology and Data Governance, Ms. Conrad, back to you.
And we have met a couple of times since our last board meeting and finalizing the technology plan, we've met with the committee and provided our feedback on the technology plan, as well as continued our expansion on the data dashboard, and I'll share that with y'all to get back with us on any feedback that you had in terms of indicators you have to sell on that dashboard, so we look at ways that we can utilize some tools, the resources that the district already has to provide that dashboard, but we need to know what indicators are important, how to press this way there, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we have moved to that part of our agenda where we're going to consider the items we have placed on the consent agenda. Questions come to Dr. Sconzo prior to our meetings, if some of those questions get answered and items not those pulled from the meeting, it's not that they haven't been discussed and gone through very carefully. So we are going to start under There's Nothing, under Governance Considerations, as far as an action item, we'll move to Superintendent's Division Reports and Considerations. We have one item, Ms. Conrad, you, I didn't go with you here. First is Item A, Calendar for Two Thousand Fifteen-Sixteen School Year. Next, moving to Learning Division Reports and Considerations. Item A, Internet, Internet Access for E-Rate Funding, year number eighteen. Consent. Next, Exceptional Elementary Classives Under Waives. That's consent. Next, Item C, Medicaid Administrative Plan, Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement, That's consent. Next, Creative Breakthroughs, Technology Renewal for Symantec Antivirus License. That's consent. And the last item under Learning Division is Website Software. That's consent. Okay, moving to Financial Services Division. Item A, Tax Refunds. That's consent. Budgetary Amendments. That's consent. Item C, Reimbursement Resolution. That's consent. That's consent. No items under Human Resources Reports and Considerations. Next is under Support Services Division. Item A, Integrated Pest Management Coordinator. That's consent. Item B, Negotiations and Purchase of Real Property, Forty-five Acres of Land. That's consent. Next, no, Item C, Negotiations and Purchase of Real Property, Fifteen Acres of Land. That's consent. Item D, Negotiations and Purchase of Real Property, One Hundred and Fifty-Five Acres of Land. That's consent. And Item E, Negotiations and Purchase of Real Property, Twenty-three Point Four-Six Acres of Land. That's consent. And Item F, Purchase of a Chiller. Consent. Fire retardant, Item G, I'm sorry, Fire Retardant Treatment of Stage Curtains in Kindred Schools. That's consent. Item H, Architectural Services and Consulting Services. That's consent. And then moving to the final group, District Wide Reports and Considerations. Item A, Postal Equipment Leasing, Service Supplies and Printing Services. That's consent. Okay. Ms. Conrad, would you please read those back in the form of an agenda? We have them ready.
Mr. President, as to the consent agenda, I knew that the board approved the following items by consent. Under Superintendent's Division, Item A, under Learning Division, Items A, B, C, D and E. Under Finance Services Division, Items A, B and C. Under Support Services Division, Items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, N, H. Under District Wide, Item A.
Thank you. Second to the second. Sidon, thank you. We have a second. Okay. All those in favor? Tom's here. Okay. And we're going to, uh, roll back through here, starting under Governance Reports. We had a report, TADME Update One-O-One.
Mr. President, we provide that to the trustees this evening as an information item only. Our intent will be to bring this back to you at the March Regional Business Meeting for your consideration and action at that time. Trustees, if you have any questions or concerns or input regarding any of the policy update, um, information, uh, please, please get to us between now and that March meeting.
Thank you. Okay. And now, uh, back to Learning Division Reports. We do have, uh, one report. And while it's a requirement that, that this, uh, is presented, it's also a, a very, um, interesting, uh, great information and, uh... And this Adwood and all her staff, you know, putting, putting this together, uh, it's just some great stuff. And hopefully you can see, we, we've had the opportunity to look at it prior. Uh, she's a lot of good information. She's going to take us, take us through it and, uh, open it to the board for any questions. Is that what, you got that ready? It's all yours.
Do you want to go ahead?
No, you start. I can look it up here. I'm just going to just jump over. We have Equipment Malfunction. I can see it. Actually, I can see it better up here because it's too close.
All right. Um, thank you for the opportunity. Tonight it is the Annual Performance Report that's required under statute to be presented. Um, and please remember that many of the indicators that are on here, this is for the thirteen-fourteen school year, they are lagging indicators. Some of them go back even further than that. But, um, as with each year, as we look through this data, there's various components that are required to be reported and different source, um, pieces of it. Part of it is the TAPR, which took the place of the old AEIS. And I know we all love these, uh, these patronisms overall, but they are spelled out there for you. And also included Campus Performance Objectives, and information from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board in regards to what our students do after they leave us, how they are performing, um, a summary of serious violent criminal incidents that are, uh, compliant as far as the report itself, but to give you an overall understanding of those types of incidents that are happening within the school, a brief statement about the, uh, P's financial data and special compliance. So when we look at our district overall, from the various pieces of information there, um, in thirteen-fourteen school year, we did have four thousand seven hundred and sixteen employees and sixty-eight point three percent of those, uh, members were directly, uh, associated as professional staff working with students and for students. The, uh, district values, eight percent of our value is in residential property, while only sixteen point six percent is in business. And this is pretty stable in there over a year. Our instructional expenditure ratio was seventeen thousand, ooh, no, neither, no, it's not seventeen, sixty-seven point one percent. Um, and in, and in reality, this too has been a very stable number and pretty, uh, overall. The financial information is in a separate report from the TAPR. This has been separated for the last couple of years since they went to this format. We are required though to inform as far as what the actual, um, on some fund balance, uh, for the total revenue was. It was twenty-three point five percent. And it was essentially previous year was twenty-three point four percent. So again, very stable number. What we do now from all of the reports is we continue to grow. Um, aside from the one time span where we did have a little bit of flattening out when we had the economic downturn, uh, we have rebounded and we continue to add students, all over the place. At the same time, we also look at our demographics. You can see that we continue to shift. We become a more diverse district throughout and throughout the district itself. So part of, the majority of the performance report is really focused on student achievement or student, um, values that are, are reported. And they are since, uh, state assessment results, graduation rates and types, things about, um, success post-secondary, students being prepared, and then actually how, how they are enrolled and how they are performing. This year, as in last year, we are governed by the, uh, evaluated as a district by the state. According to the index system, this is the new latest graphic that TDA produces, um, that emphasizes the four areas of student achievement, student progress, closing performance gaps and post-secondary measures. Um, if you keep thinking mind on each one of these, they, most of these are very highly dependent upon, actually all four of them have components of the state assessments that are rolled into them. It is only the fourth one that has some other variables that are included in it. The other thing about the accountability system is that you can either be met standard or improvement required. There are distinctions that are available at the campus level. There are seven of them. And as you can think about it, the distinctions are really about pure group comparison. Colleges are looked at according to forty other, uh, campuses across the state that match them as far as size, mobility, economic disadvantage and, uh, overall diversity. I'm very glad to report to you this year, as last year, all of our campuses in the district met standard, met standard. There were twenty-three distinctions that were run by fourteen of our campuses. Um, and, um, again, that's very understandable. So what does that look like when you look at all of those hundreds of thousands of tests and other pieces of data that are gathered and moved forward? What you see here is the graphic representation of the district's performance that's published. Each of the indices are measured in a bar graph to give you an idea. The green bars that are here represent what the threshold was to be, you had to achieve at or above in order to be considered as, uh, met standard. And in the system, you have to meet standard on all four of the indices in order to be considered as a met standard district and on campus. The data that goes into it as far as maximum point, the points earned, ma- out of the total maximum and the actual index scores, those values are given here as far as what it is. The district did not earn a distinction. We really only eligible for one. We did not earn the post-secondary distinction, but we continue to move closer towards that. Also included in this report are system safeguards. When you take and compose all of these numbers together, um, and while it does evaluate in each one of these indices, different subgroups and in different ways, it is quite possible that a particular subgroup could be, um, overlooked in some way or the attention might not be there. So in order to look at and say, which areas do we need to focus on or could be potential areas that you should look at, there are the system safeguards we hear. And those performance standards on those, this is for every race, ethnicity, special education, English language learners as well, and economic disadvantage. We continue to look at our dropout rates. We know we want our students to be at school, coming to school and learning. Again, once again, at the middle school level, they continued with their zero percent dropout rate. Um, for nine through twelfth grade, the annual dropout rate was point eight percent. For the two thousand thirteen cohort, we had graduation rate of ninety-four point one. When you go through and look at all the data that is reported, there's about four or five different ways graduation rates are reported on the TAPR. The one that I'm reporting here is the one that matches federal. It is also the one that is used for the actual accountability rating. What you can see is the different subgroups as far as what the, um, actual graduation rates are within those and, um, for the overall timeframe. What I can tell you is that this is significantly, that ninety-four point one graduation rate is significantly better than it was the first time this district here told you about graduation rates. Um, and it has actually improved even over the previous year. Last year's was ninety, previous year's was ninety-three point eight. This is ninety-four point one. One of the areas that we do look at quite closely in this district is, um, we look at college readiness indicators. And these are the ones that are, these particular ones, um, that are required in the report do come down to look at completion of dual credit and advanced course placements. Um, we are up again as far as the completion of those courses. Recommended and distinguished high school graduation rates, that is the second line here. This is the, probably the last year that you're going to see this. This is the old four by four and some other requirements on it. Our rate, um, for this particular cohort was eighty point one. And I'm glad to report to you that that is improved over the previous year because it's seventy-eight point nine percent the previous year. AB and IB scoring at or above criteria, again, we were up this year over the previous years. And for SAT and ACT participation, while we were at sixty-eight point four percent, we had a little bit of a decline as far as the overall participation rate. Um, our actual SAT, SAT scores remained sta- steady at fourteen seventy-three and our ACT scores increased to twenty-two point three. And what's significant about this is we are both stating regional averages on each one of those. Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board looks and tracks students, um, in post-secondary after they leave, um, school districts, their first year after graduation. And they use very, um, the identifying numbers, you know, those state ID numbers that we have for kiddos to track them. They do look at two and four-year public schools and the cooperating private schools within Texas. There are a certain number of our students who do go out of state. Of course, these would not be trackable, um, in this particular way. But when we look at the class of two thousand twelve, so we look at two thousand twelve and then as they matriculated in on the thirteen-fourteen school year, you can see that we had twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven graduates that were tracked. Of those, twenty-three percent four-year institutions, thirty-nine percent two-year institutions, three percent of private institutions. The four-year rate is about steady. Um, our two-year rate has increased slightly. We see more kids going to the two-year college programs. Um, and the three, three percent for the private has been steady. Um, and the indication that the TDA for how our students are performing, the two-point-O GPA by no means indicates that it's a high level of achievement, but it is ones that students are then not on academic probation and are capable of going on to the next, kind of following year. On the TAPR, they've also added these indicators for the second time, for second year in a row. They do look at enrollment and completion without remediation of our previous graduates. And while this data does match up one for one with what the Higher Education Coordinating Board reports, um, it is consistent with it. Um, sixty-four point five percent of mobile graduates do go on and that enroll, um, into the state or, um, into, uh, institutions of two and four years or the three, uh, or the, um, excuse me, the private institutions. Our rate is higher than the state and the region. Um, what is probably most notable is when we look at the, including the first year of, um, of that post-secondary experience without taking any remediation classes, and this is a rate that has increased. We have more kids going and being successful, taking truly college credit resources in that first year. Last year, the rate was at sixty-nine percent. While all of these things are really about the, um, state assessment and some very standardized types of things, last year for the first year, um, local districts were required and really embraced the opportunity to be able to do a local evaluation on, based on criteria determined by committees of community members. Um, this is the student, uh, community and student engagement, um, evaluation, if you will. The nine areas are defined by the state and, and you can see them up there as far as for fine arts, wellness, um, let's see, community and parental involvement, uh, twenty-first century workforce and other few other particular areas that are there. Um, last year, I talked to you about the different type of community, uh, process that went through. This was over a hundred people. We added twenty-three new members to the committees this year in order to look at and evaluate. As you can see, the district rank overall is recognized. This fall, as committees reconvene, community members were added. Um, the rubrics and the criteria were reevaluated this year and, um, disseminated, feedback, the whole process and, and are now in the process of being looked at overall. All of this information is posted on the district website. As part of the report, we are required to report to you serious and violent criminal incidents. Um, these are the ones that we, uh, look at as state mandatory removals to DAAP or state mandatory expulsions to JJAP. And you can look at, there's a chart within the, um, packet that defines most of these. These are the ones that are the really, the big crimes, if you will. Um, and you can look at those, the data that's presented is for the component. What I can tell, to, tell you is that in total, it is less than two percent of the total incidents of all discipline incidents in the district. And it is down slightly from previous years. We tend to hover right at that two percent, um, right at that two percent level. We are below the two percent issue. We were a little below it in the previous year. One of the other pieces is the special education compliance status. This is a state performance plan for special education. There are fourteen indicators. Um, they range for, again, looking at special education students for graduation rates, dropout rates, participation and petitioning on state assessments, suspension expulsion rates, actual, um, educational environments, uh, for grades ages three through twenty-one, how inclusive those are, only childhood outcomes, um, disproportionality, parent, um, participation, involvement, timely evaluations, the list goes on. What I have told you here is that Indicator Eleven is the one that I've indicated. Indicator Eleven is about timeliness of assessments. Um, there is a time window when assessments are to be completed. If you miss on even one, you are considered non-compliant. Um, the, what I can tell you is that on this one, we are under review with TDA right now because we have a couple of them that were not completed and we can attribute back to snow days. The calendars have come out of whack as far as overall. Um, TDA is looking at it and we are evaluating the data. They will go back in and reevaluate the actual stuff. So we anticipate that being switched to a compliant standpoint. District and Campus Improvement Plan Goals and Objectives for the current year are also in your report itself. They, um, were approved like the actual goals were approved last spring in two thousand fourteen and the four area, the five years, excuse me, that the board had, uh, put forward last year. And those constituted the framework for those particular plans. What I can tell you is that this year we are with the adoption and the work we've done with student, with Strategic Improvement Planning. Those pillars, those goals and those objectives are being worked into the new, um, District Improvement Plan and Campus Improvement Plans for next year. And to that end, this is the actual plan that is posted as the guidepost for as we move forward for student achievement, service people and finance, the actual, uh, goals that are there and then the objectives underneath have those values. And these values apply to data pertinent to this year based on the end of... Now, these values apply to data pertinent to this year based on the end of last year. They will be reevaluated at the end of this year, and new values will be put in there as far as goals. What you can see from here as far as this is that we have begun participation in the district services survey, as well as the employee engagement to parents, so they will be administered later this spring, and those values will be added as well. One thing I did want to point out to you is that TDA has released and has posted as of the end of January, what they're calling their Texas School Accountability Dashboard. This is really a lot of data that's in a lot of these hard reports, that you can go and look at the 35 and 45-page report all at once. This dashboard is a way for you to be able to look at this data in a more graphic fashion. The website is here at the top, but really, this is the homepage when you come in there. This is the state data that's displayed. You can go in and look at finding your district, or finding your school, or work to compare districts, or compare other schools. And then there's also other information as far as definitions and some other pieces. But when you look at this, you can very easily go in, if you go into compare your district, and put yourself side by side with another district as you would want to look at it. Now, this is historical, and it is predetermined as far as what it's going to look like, but it is a quick and easy way for you to either look at a district side by side, or campuses side by side. And again, it's the same kind of information as far as enrollment and demographic. What's probably most interesting about if you go in to look at this on the side by sides, you can pick in far as the districts to look at, similar size, type, tax rate, property, well, you can choose, and it will filter through for those for you within the district. One more tool, the state is the last for us to be able to look at. It's a lot of data, it's a lot of information. The important thing about it is that we are moving forward, we are seeing some steady increases, even if they are in from small increments, they are moving in the right direction, and they are trending in a way that we would want them to do. Because we know that it's never about staying still with where you are, it is always about moving forward one step at a time, always meant to, to the higher goal. So if you have any questions, the entire report will be available with the administration doing the hard copy posted on the district website. If you have any questions, please let me know. Either now or later.
Yeah, we do. Ms. Lepes?
Can we get an update for TDA reviews, the special education?
Yes.
Everyone's, everyone's found out what happens. We have you for that. Okay. Thank you, Carol.
That should be going to them sometime this week for review, and then depending upon their timeline.
Okay. I just want to make sure the board's updated so we don't have...
Sure. Anything else?
Any other questions?
You mentioned we had, there was 23 distinctions on 14 campuses?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
How do you, is that, we find that maybe on there, report cards individually about campus or...
They would be on there. There's also in the, in the CD that you have, there's also some summary documents that have that in there as well. There's a table that, that is produced, we've got two different tables that show to the best known which distinctions that are actually there.
Did we know?
Yes.
You found, you mentioned the peer group comparison?
On the distinctions, it is always, the distinctions are determined based on how you perform with your peer group. So for a campus, what TDA does is they look at your size, your economically disadvantaged, your mobility, various characteristics, and they match you up with 40 other campuses from across the state that are most like you. And then within that, then the data for how well you are doing in, say, reading English Language Arts, or in mathematics, or in student progress, those particular, compared with those campuses. And if you follow from the top four down with that, then you obviously have the distinction.
Do our campuses know who's in there?
Yes, they do. Those, those lists are normally produced in the late summer, normally around in the August timeframe, July, August timeframe, and then those are shared. As soon as they're released, they're shared, and then they come back with what, what the actual standards and the analysis of the data. And I believe we shared also those groupings last fall at some point at a board member's request, if memory serves me correctly, but if you're interested in it, we'll see if we can, we'll be glad to forward those.
Yeah, because that's interesting to see when you're looking at campus and looking at its 39 peers.
You know, one thing, a small, small data point that you mentioned, and that was about remediation on the freshman college level.
Right.
And we talked about this extensively three or four years ago, and started looking at developing our curriculum from the top down to bottom up to, because one of the biggest things that, that we were hearing in the community is our kids are going to college, and, and they're not even getting credit for half their classes. And that was a little overblown, but they were having to take remedial courses and weren't getting college credit. So it's really good to see over the last two years that we're making significant progress. So that, I guess, Dr. Stronzo and, and Dr. Price and the curriculum group, and the academic side, you are making a lot of progress with the new curriculum going from the top down and closing that gap. So our kids are really going to, going to college prepared and ready to go. So hats off to you on that.
I knew you were going to like that. Because, no, you've been backing that drum and writing this up for a long time, and that really is showing some great progress. Because we're looking at the trend in which ways, so that's, that's great. Ms. Adwood, did you, one of your slides at the very beginning, you and I talked about, could you maybe just point out? Yeah, that's the one. Where you see the, the gap in the last two years on the at-risk students that all of a sudden, wow, what happened? There's good reason for that, and you guys have done a great job in focusing the district on that. So I just wanted to thank you.
So, you know, at risk is a very, as, this is, the at risk is defined by the state criteria, and not to go into too deep in many of the details, there are 13 criteria that the state uses. Many people think that economically disadvantaged is one of those criteria, it is not. Of the 13 criteria, there are things in there like, were you retained? Did you fail a state assessment? Did you fail two or more poor subjects within a current, within the current school year? Did you perform unsuccessfully on a reading test at the lower grade levels? There are things such as our young parents, our students who are parents are also included in there, limited English proficiency, number of different characteristics that are there. So when you look at this, you can see that we were pretty steady overall, and over the years, we have been. And that was something that was kind of like, you know, as we moved into a different state assessment, where we didn't have as high passing rates as we knew we were becoming, there were different challenges overall with a number of different things. When we look at the changing, changes within our district overall, it didn't make a whole lot of sense that our at-risk numbers were staying either low or, you know, not progressing at all. What we've done in the past year or two is really look at and examine our practices on who we identify the students who are at risk. And that's not to say that we weren't doing identifying them, but we really went after to make a, an effort to assure that we were. Part of that because state compensatory education funding, which is part of our, our general fund budget, is set aside for supplemental services for at-risk students. And so it's got a connection now that you have to, if you're using those funds, you've got to be serving at-risk kids. And we want to make sure that our kids who are at risk are identified, so that we can be providing all the types of services that we can through all of the different funding mechanisms that are available.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Adwood, thanks very much, and please let all of you folks know, we appreciate all the effort of putting this together. Okay, and we have one more report, probably won't take as long to go through, on your financial services report. If anyone has any questions, Dr. Stronzo on it, their tax collection report, it is there. If not, then we will move to the item A on our agenda, future board business. Is there anything anyone would like to put into our parking lot? Sid?
Well, it's not necessarily a parking lot issue. I did pull the land purchases on the agenda. But Dr. Stronzo, I know it came up at lunch today, would you address the idea that we can't really disclose where those locations are and why at this point in time?
Sure, happy to. So what the board did this evening was authorize the administration to now proceed to enter into and finalize negotiations for the properties that, that we're seeking to purchase for new campuses going forward over the next eight years. So given that, that the district is in, literally in negotiations with property owners, state law protects that, that information from public view until such time as, as, as negotiations are completed and the district enters into a which is contract for the property. So that's why the reference to just total number of acres, I would want everyone to be aware that trustees know full well the landowners that we are negotiating with and the conditions, and have provided the administration with, with the parameters of, for negotiations. So even though the board is authorized or negotiating and finalizing an agreement, it's within the parameters that have been defined by the board. It's not an open ticket to just negotiate whatever we want.
Thanks. Thanks, Sid. Michelle? Go ahead. Well, with that, I am going to gabulous close at 8:23 PM. Thank you.